The budget hearing for June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six ten. With us is Councilor Bacon, Councilor McGivern, Councilor Tomlin, Councilor Puelo, Councilor Maldonales, Councilor Anderson Burgos, Councilor Givner. If I'm catching everyone here. Make sure I don't miss someone. Before we get started, I just asked for a moment of silence tonight, and then we'll do it again at the full city council meeting. But Councilor Bartley, I did speak with him today. His dad passed away. And we'll have more on that, but just in respect for his dad, former Speaker of the House, and just a wonderful, wonderful man. Asked for a moment of silence for Mr. Bartley Senior. Thank you. With that, we'll start with the school department. Anthony Soto is online. So we'll turn it over to Anthony. This is page thirty of the budget. And Anthony, you there? Yep, I see you.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, and Councilor Bacon?
Just as a point of information, can we get hard copy of what he's presenting?
We're gonna look for hard, yes. Yes, for yes.
I did just share that with Jeff Anderson Burgos. So that he can share an electronic copy and provide you with a hard copy as well. And I apologize that I'm not in person. I'm kind of solo at the moment, so I have to run tech for the presentation and do the presentation. And I thought that would be very difficult, trying to do it on my little laptop in City Hall chambers. So normally, I'd like to be there in front of all of you, but I'm alone today. And want to make sure that we're able to present this to you and the public in a way that is meaningful.
Alright, so do you want to start with your presentation, and then we'll go to questions?
Yeah, if I could, am I able to share a screen? Yes, okay, here we go. Okay. Can you guys see that there?
Yep.
Great, so first, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you for allowing me to present today on the post-school budget. Really appreciate all the support that you've shown throughout, and especially for the recent vote that we got for the middle schools. I'm just so appreciative of everybody. And Holyoke should be thankful for all of your leadership and supporting that decision. I also want to say that I'm gonna try to browse through this presentation. I would estimate it's gonna take like fifteen to twenty minutes. This presentation, you did share with the school committee at the last school committee meeting. So I want to thank them for all of their input, all of their questions. We did dive in in detail to a lot of these numbers and appreciate their support as well. What you have in front of you on page thirty is very high level, just the numbers. It's really two numbers plus our cherry assessments. So it's a number for salaries and a number for expenses. But my approach has always been with the city council to share a story of the budget, some challenges that we have, our outlook. You know, what's in all of those numbers by our different cost centers? So that you get a better sense of what the school department financial picture is, other than what you see on page thirty in front of you. One thing I want to reiterate is that this entire budget development process is decentralized. So we meet with every single principal, we meet with every single department head, and we go through all of their different line items. And throughout the entire process, the budget development process has been grounded in our strategic plan and carrying out our vision and mission and our core beliefs. That includes our learner profile and what we aspire our students to be, the characteristics, the Holyoke learner reach. And it also includes our equity commitments that we've been committed to for at least the last few years. All of our budget decisions were grounded in everything that's in our plan and these priorities. So we went through an extensive strategic planning process and got well over fifteen hundred people to participate in that process. And we settled on, I wouldn't say we settled, but we landed on these five priorities, which is a strong focus on early literacy and making sure students are reading at grade level by the time they finish third grade. Making sure we're improving our learning experiences for our students and that all students get culturally responsive instruction. And, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. It's supposed to be smoother because I'm running it, right? The third priority that we landed on is inclusion, and this is gonna be a huge focus for next year. We have, you know, almost thirty percent of our students have a learning disability of some sort. And we have a significant population of English language learners as well. And we just haven't been able to close the gap between our general ed students and our students, our other students that might need additional supports. So we can't continue to do the same thing and expect different results. So one of the things that I've focused on in the next few years, and next year especially, is how we're delivering that type of instruction to our students and making sure that it's inclusive. So it might mean that, you know, what we used to pull out students for, and they would spend a significant amount of time outside of the classroom, we're now doing in the classroom with the right supports. Really trying to create a culture that like, yes, I am a special education teacher, yeah, or I am an ELL teacher, but I'm serving all of our kids, and we're working together as a team to meet the needs of our students. And that's just a different, a shifting culture. It's just not how things have been done in the past, but we're committed to heading in that direction. And then supporting the whole child is not new, and retaining talented and diverse staff is also something that's not new, but important in our strategic plan. I want to talk about some key investments. We, you know, we did get a significant amount of money in ESER. And the strategy with ESER, this federal funding source that we had three years to spend, was to accelerate the Student Opportunity Act. So the Student Opportunity Act was gonna be implemented over a seven-year period, which meant instead of, you know, instead of getting all of the general fund up front, they were gonna incrementally increase the general fund and chapter seventy over the course of seven years. So we knew that there's gonna be some funding available to the school department in future years, and we use ESER money to accelerate that. We don't want to wait till year seven or year four to be able to fund the right amount of counselors in our school, to be able to fund academic intervention teachers, which we didn't have in our schools. Our expert teachers and coaches that are dedicated to improving the quality of teaching and supporting our teachers and helping them sharpen their craft and better support our learners. Our English language teachers, our deans of management and ops, because they're such a focus on improving instruction, we implemented these temporary positions with ESER with the hopes of taking some of the work that is non-instructional related off of the principals and assistant principals, so that they can focus on instruction and teaching and learning. And the deans can focus on like budget and cafeteria work and transportation, things that normally bog down the day-to-day operations of the principals and the assistant principals. We went out and got some people to support that work, so our principals could really, really lean into instruction over the last three years. So this is gonna be the third year that we invest in deans of management and ops, and it's probably, you know, and we have to reevaluate whether or not we can absorb those positions into our operating budget. And we did spend a significant amount of money on, you know, deferred maintenance and making our schools look better and making the learning environments better than what they have been in the past. This wasn't a particularly difficult year to balance the budget. We had to, you know, with the last year of ESER funding coming up next year. But I did want to give a high-level overview of, you know, the picture of revenue that we had. Overall, we saw a seven-point-seven percent increase in revenue, which is pretty significant. You know, I worked in public education for, I want to say fifteen years, where we saw regular declines or steady level-funded revenue sources. You know, I worked in Springfield and worked here. You know, we've only seen incremental increases to revenue and then costs like out-of-district tuition and health insurance and things like that go up. So it always put us in a position where we're having to try to maintain the level of service that we have with no new revenue, and in fact, trying to balance a budget and make cuts in certain areas to prioritize other areas. We did see our charter tuition reimbursement decreased, and that's primarily due to enrollment. And then we did, at the last finance subcommittee, we did talk extensively about transportation, and we saw an increase due to the rebid, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. Transportation costs, we mentioned we're going up about eight percent. I do want to reiterate with the council, and we talked about this the last time, that we anticipated that the costs were gonna go up two years ago. And thanks to your, you know, thanks for your support, we extended the contract for another two years because it was the end of a three-year contract. And by extending that contract another two years, we saved over a million dollars over the last couple of years. But we knew these increases were coming, and had we gone out to bid two years ago, we would have seen those same increases. Some districts were seeing, you know, over twenty-seven percent increases. Some were seeing eighteen, fifteen, but no one was seeing what we saw the last two years. Because of your support in extending those contracts, we only saw a three-and-a-half percent increase each year, while others were experiencing what we're seeing now, these increases based on the transportation market itself. Some things that we did to try to keep the cost down, we rebid. So the bids came in, they were about fifteen percent. They were projected to increase about fifteen percent. So we sat down and we took a look at the bid specs and worked with Jamie down at City Hall, who's incredible, to figure out like, okay, what in our bid specs was driving up the cost? We went out, we went back out to bid, and then we're able to see a much smaller increase from fifteen percent to eight percent. So that resulted in almost five hundred thousand dollars in savings just in this upcoming year, and about two and a half million dollars if you factor the cost over the course of the five-year contract. I talked about the prior decision to extend the contract, so we don't need to talk about that further. But I did want to just put a picture, you know, I tried to visualize this. One thing we did a few years ago was we moved the Holyoke High School time to one of the tiers. It was dead smack in the middle, and all of their buses were kind of on their own, and we weren't able to tier them with other buses. And by changing the start and end times of some of our schools, we were able to save about one-point-two million dollars annually by reducing the number of buses that we have on the road. Another shift that we made is we shifted a significant portion of our transportation operation to vans instead of the bigger minibuses that we were using for out-of-district transportation and for wheelchair transportation. And that generated a savings of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And then we already talked about the bidding that, so all of these were just different ways. I want you and the public to know that we did everything we could to keep these costs down, and we worked really closely with your procurement office to get these numbers to where they're at right now. Student Opportunity Act, I talked about it. It's increasing, essentially, it's increasing funding for our ELL, economically disadvantaged and special ed students. And we've been able to benefit from that, which is why we see a seven-point-two million dollar increase. And we should see these increases up through the year of two thousand and twenty-seven. And this is, this graph right here, or this pie chart, or bar graph, gives you a sense of where we were the last ten years, and then since the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, how our revenue has changed. So you can see that. And then once fully implemented by two thousand and twenty-seven, you'll see our revenue taper off and level off. And then it'll just go up based on enrollment or based on inflation. It won't be this new legislation that is giving us significant increases. Salaries are going up about ten percent, and we made a, you know, we have invested in our teacher contract. We saw an average of about ten percent increase. You know, it wasn't, didn't work out that way for everybody in the collective bargaining agreement, but on average, the changes that we made to this resulted in over a ten percent increase in teacher salaries. These numbers are also slightly skewed in that we, I mentioned earlier, we made a significant amount of investments in key positions that we knew we wanted to fund on Student Opportunity Act when it became available. So our strategy is like we're taking some of those things off, like academic intervention teachers and counselors, and we're moving it to the general fund, which contributes to some of the increases that you'll see in the department budgets and in the budget overall. Supplies and services went up about four-point-five percent. Health insurance, thankfully, will remain flat. I think the city did a really good job negotiating that and making sure that the impact of health insurance for active employees wasn't a significant increase this year. Retired teacher health insurance, and then charter and choice tuition increased about four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. This slide here just captures everything that I just talked about in a one pager. So those of you that have it electronically and want to see it, this one page, here's where all the funds by expenses, salary, supply, charter, assessments, unemployment, et cetera. This page kind of outlines that for you. And it also has at the top of the page what the revenue is. Now, there is a difference between the slide that I just shared and the numbers that show up on page thirty in the book, because the slide I just shared includes these red items here, which is health insurance and retirement. And those numbers aren't reflected in the schools page, those are reflected in other areas. But the school department is kicking in about ten-point-four million dollars for the fringe benefits, which shows up in another area of the budget book that you guys have in front of you. When we look at the page in front of you, those costs aren't included. So how we come up with the amount is it's the net school spending requirement, charter reimbursement. We back out some costs that the city takes for their administrative work that they perform on behalf of the schools. And then we add transportation-related expenses that aren't eligible for net school spending and leases. And then you could see that we back out of that number, the health insurance and retirement numbers, to get the appropriation of one-eleven. The number you have in your book is one-eleven, eight, forty, nine, eighty-one. There's a slight difference, because when we developed this and shared it with the school committee, we were using the House Ways and Means number, and what you have in front of you uses the Senate Ways and Means number. The numbers are slightly off, but those numbers throughout the budget process change. And we usually come to you towards the beginning of the year with a final. They're gonna change again when the state releases their final numbers. And we'll have to go and see what the impact is on the budget and come adjust the numbers accordingly. I just shared some budget assumptions. We're using House Ways and Means. We're meeting net school spending. We're assuming circuit breakers not getting cut, and that our entitlement grants aren't getting significantly cut, that E-rate applications will be approved, that enrollment's not gonna change drastically, and that our utilities aren't gonna change drastically either since the last time we analyzed them. This is just an overview, and I think what I want to share is this visual. The majority of our budget is state-funded through chapter seventy. So you can see about eighty-eight percent, eighty-eight-point-six percent, or ninety-seven million, comes from chapter seventy, and then the rest comes from local funds. Eleven-point-four percent, or twelve-point-five million dollars. Then you could see like, this is a list of the, sorted by the lowest local contribution to highest. So these are like probably the first ten schools. I think this represents, you know, how much money is actually coming from the state versus local. And you could see we're third right now, and we usually go back and forth with Springfield, but Lawrence has always been first, where, you know, the majority of their money, only four-point-nine percent of their school budget comes from local contribution, and the rest comes from state aid. This is how we organize our budget. So we have our schools, and each principal works with us to develop their spending plan using the staff allocation and the resources that they're allocated. We have our academics and school leadership, which includes my assistant superintendent. Finance and strategy, human resources, operations and technology, special education, and then the superintendent, school committee, and family engagement budget. The family engagement budget was really small, so I just lumped them in for presentation purposes. You can see here what the costs are for each of these departments. The operations and technology went down. We moved some technology expenses to each department, which was a shift instead of centrally managing it. The biggest increase in finance and strategy is transportation. And then pupil services, the biggest increase there was our out-of-district tuition, which we saw the OSD set the rates, and the increase was about fourteen percent. So that had a significant impact on those out-of-district costs. And I just spoke to all of those, so we don't need to get into them. This is academics and school leadership. You can see what makes up academics and school leadership, and on this next slide, you can see the dollar amounts. So overall, academics and school leadership went up by about seven-point-three percent. That this is where our district-wide art budget is, our pre-K budget is, our ELL budget. This doesn't include the teachers for those positions, those show up in the schools. But any like district-wide curriculum that we're managing and purchasing would show up in these budgets. The big decrease in early education is not because we're cutting pre-K or early education, but last year, when we developed the budget, we didn't know we were getting this federal CPI grant. So, and we have a pre-K program that VOC helps run, so we budgeted for that last year. The grant ended up coming through, and it's a three-year grant, so we didn't need to include those costs in the general fund, which is why those costs are going down pretty significantly there. And I will say like, the academics department is a completely new department with a new leader. So this budget does look a lot different than last year. You know, I feel like we have a much better picture of curriculum and what our schools need now, but the budget reflects that, and it's gonna, it looks different. Some of, a lot of these costs were out in the schools budgets, where they had, principals had to purchase their own curriculum. We moved a lot of that into these budgets, so that we can make sure we're monitoring what curriculum is out there and making sure schools have them timely, in a timely manner. Finance and strategy, you can see the biggest part of that is transportation. You could see the changes here, the big increase in communications. We did add one translator, interpreter. The amount of work that our translation and interpretation team is doing was just too much to keep up. And we know we need to meet the needs of our community, especially our Spanish-speaking community. So we had to add another position to the budget to keep up with the work. And then you could see transportation, we talked about that pretty extensively. I don't want to. Operations and technology is, you know, that cost center has our facility management team, our utilities, all of the facilities management expenses in the district. And you can see that those have reduced, partially due to rezoning and moving some stuff to other budgets. But we did, you know, we did see, you know, taking one of our schools offline. We did see, we do expect there to be some operational efficiencies, both in technology and operations. Pupil services, it's broken out by related services, settles, special education services, fed summer school and out-of-district tuition, well, as psychologists, and the biggest chunk of that is out-of-district tuition, which went up about twenty-five percent. So these are students, I mean, the classic example that I will use is if we have a student that is hearing impaired and needs to learn using sign language, there's a special school for that. So Willie Ross School for the Deaf would be a much more appropriate placement for that student, because we don't offer a program that would really help support that student. So whenever we have students where their needs could be met in an out-of-district placement, we have to pay for it, and these are the tuition costs associated with it. Human resources, the big change there is almost a hundred thou, or a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And this is a result of the new contract that we have for teachers. It requires brand-new teachers to come a week earlier than they would normally come. And we have, and they go through, it's all to support them. They go through additional professional development, and as part of the contract, they're compensated for it. So that in itself was about ninety thousand dollars. So that's the major contributor to the increase in human resources. Superintendent, school committee, and DEI, which also is gonna be overseeing our family engagement team, you could see here. So as part of rezoning, we were able to eliminate, you know, we were able to reduce two principal positions, and one of those positions was repurposed to DE and I and family engagement position. So right now, I have a current principal, Stephen Mogel, who is the principal at Morgan. He is, we're releasing him one day a week, so that he can help move forward the diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development and support principals in that work one day a week. Next year, he would be moving into that role full-time, and this is the cost center that it is assigned to. And then the last cost center is schools. It's broken out elementary, middle, and high. We have two high schools, about seven elementary schools, and next year, we will have three middle schools. And next year, we're actually gonna have six elementary schools feeding into three middle schools. When we do get the new building, it'll be three elementary schools feeding into one, three elementary schools feeding into the other. And you can see the costs associated there. I'm gonna share, so I'm trying to be mindful of time here. I said we would take about twenty minutes, and I know we're well past that. So I'm gonna go through these pretty briefly. These are just like major HPS trends. So our average teacher salary, you can see that it's been consistently going up. I think that, you know, as people progress through the comp model, the increases are greater than these, but you gotta factor in turnover. So we have some people that retire and some newer people coming in. So our average is going from sixty-six to about sixty-nine thousand five hundred next year. Average health plans, this has always been, every year for a long time, has just been a major drain in resources. Not drain, but like, we, you know, we have to pay Not drain, but like, we, you know, we have to pay for these costs, and we would have to make cuts elsewhere in the budget. So I'm glad with all the work that your personnel team and whoever was on the committee to review health insurance costs was able to get it down to pretty flat. And we didn't have to make any adjustments to the budget to be able to fund our health insurance costs. Charter trends, you can see, you know, the charter schools are also getting their share of Student Opportunity Act money. So this is just a reflection of the Student Opportunity Act. We get the money, we pass it on to the charter schools. It's about thirteen point one million dollars for next year, and then we get reimbursement of two point four million. So you can see that trend for the past many years. Choice enrollment, this is always something I shared with all of you. You can see that our school choice enrollment is going down, went down slightly this year. But we're also getting, receiving more students than we ever had, too. So these are, we have about a hundred and forty-four students that live in other communities, but choose to come to Holyoke Public Schools. And that's the blue bar there. I think this is important to note, because our Chapter 70 formula gives us about one point eight million dollars for out-of-district students, based on the formula. But our costs are actually twelve point two million. So it really does leave us with a seven point two million dollar gap to pull from other areas of the budget to be able to afford the tuition that it costs for these students. And I just think that, you know, the Student Opportunity Act was great, but this is still something that's fundamentally wrong with the Chapter 70 formula. You know, we are expected to meet the needs of our students. Our costs are twelve million dollars, and we're only getting about four point nine million dollars through the Chapter 70 formula and circuit breaker. So it just, it does put a strain on the budget. And I hope that at some point, the state will be looking into that. I know they're putting a task force together to review special education across the Commonwealth. And I just really hope this is something that they look at. Final thoughts, you know, moving to elementary, middle, and high was a good move. We're lucky that we have, we're lucky that we were able to benefit from having ESER funding and Student Opportunity Act money so that we can make sure that we're investing in the things that we need to invest in and not waiting seven years for Student Opportunity Act money to come into play. And that's, you know, amongst leadership. You know, we were able to align our, you know, how many principals we have, how many APs we have, how many deans we have, how many family engagement coordinators and counselors. And then on the teaching and learning side, we were able to invest in literacy coaches, math coaches, interventionists, making sure that with rezoning that we have at least three teachers in every grade span, which is going to allow that collaboration with the special education teachers and the ELL teachers that we talked about, so that we can meet the needs of our students. Making sure that every school has at least four enrichment or essential classes, so music, art, PE, dance, things like that. You know, our schools now, they didn't have all of those essentials. But next year, you know, with rezoning, they're going to be able to have those essentials. And making sure that we have enough pair of professionals to support the work as well. Last thing I'll say is, you know, is really that positive trends. Student Opportunity Act is a good thing. It helps us do things that we were never able to do in the past, things that our students deserve, things that our staff deserve. ESER was used to accelerate that, and everything that we did was in alignment with all of our strategic priorities. The uncertainties of the future are what's concerning to me. So now we have resources, now we're able to fund schools with the positions that they desperately need. The labor market is, you know, we had twenty-seven special education teacher vacancies all year. We had about seventy vacancies all year that we weren't able to fill. So, you know, while we created all these great plans to support our schools and support our students and support our teachers, it's unfortunate that, you know, since the pandemic, you know, the pandemic was, we didn't see this in the past, this labor market, the way it is, especially in the teaching profession. You know, the other uncertainty is what impact, you know, inflation is going to have on the state. Hopefully, they can continue to fully implement the SOA. I think, you know, they've all expressed like the SOA is not going away and that it's safe. But that's something that we, you know, we need to think about in the future and be mindful of, because we are developing a budget based on the state's ability to pay their portion of the school budget. And that was a lot. I tried really hard to get that out of twenty minutes, but it was a little over a half hour, and now I'll open it up for questions.
All right, so with that, questions? Counselor Bacon first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that presentation. And going forward, I guess I just have one general question, because I understand everything that you put forth tonight. But I'm hoping that as the year progresses and the changes in the plans are worked, that we can see some summaries of outcomes for improvements in the students' abilities and how those align with the increased investment in the plan to achieve those. So I'm hoping we can see some side-by-sides in that regard going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon. And I will say that I do share a quarterly update with the school committee and with the state. I'd be happy to also share that with the city council, if that's something that they would like to see for sure. But on a quarterly basis, we analyze all of our student data. We analyze, you know, all the walkthroughs that we're doing to class, attendance rates, and analyze all the benchmarks that we set out for for the year. And then we just have an honest conversation of where we're at and where we need to focus for the next quarter. And I summarize that in a memo to the school committee and to the state. I'd be happy to share that. I don't know if it's a side-by-side comparison that you'd want to see, but it is an update to our progress and an update to where we're at relative to our strategic plan and our goals.
Okay, well, speaking for myself, I would appreciate a summary, but through the chair.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, as always, appreciate your presentation. You do far beyond what we, since you and when you, and even when Dr. Zrych was here, your presentations have been on point and given us a good, clear look at the budget process, but more important, that the, you know, the status of where we are, and I appreciate it. Just a couple of things. Net school spending, just what's the formula to get us to net school spending?
So it's a formula completely driven by your enrollment demographics. So they take the number of elementary students, the number of middle and high school students, the number of vocational students, the number of special ed, and the number of economically disadvantaged. It used to be the low income, but, you know, they changed the term to economically disadvantaged. And through that, you get an amount per student. The foundation budget is, once you get that amount per student, that's what's called your foundation budget. But then the foundation formula is like, they take into consideration the city's ability to pay, you know, housing values, all these things that I really, you know, I, way above my level of thinking. And they say, okay, of this, you know, ninety-one million dollar budget, this is how much we're going to give in State aid, which it turns out to be, you know, about eighty-eight percent. And this is how much we're going to ask the city to, the city has to kick in in order to meet the net school spending requirement. I don't know if that answers your question, but it is driven by the number of students and like an amount for each of those students by category.
It does answer the question, because what I'm really looking at, and it may not be a question to you, is I understand, you know, we're back and forth, if you want to compare us to Springfield, similar situations with the student population and certainly similar economics. But what I don't understand is comparing Springfield and comparing Holyoke to Lawrence. I mean, you know, if you go by enrollment, Lawrence doubles, better doubles, our student population. Their budget, school spending, better, more than better doubles our school spending budget. Their local contribution is only a million plus, not even three hundred thousand dollars more than we give.
Right.
That bothers me, because across the field, you know, it is not always a level playing field. And we won't get into the Western Mass versus the Eastern Mass or the numbers game, but it's just, you know, something I just wanted to point out. Workforce, interesting. You're, we understand your dilemma with the labor market. How are we doing, you know, we've talked about this. We've lost a lot of teachers over the years for different reasons. You know, we've lost some tenure teachers, not that they retired, but they went on to other systems. We have tenure teachers that have stayed, because other systems would, they would start at less pay than what they're getting here. And yet, we're offering new teachers incentives to come to Holyoke, and we're bumping them up more than tenure teachers. How is that working out?
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're bumping them up more than tenure teachers.
I can talk to a few tenure teachers that would say that.
Well, what I mean is like, they're not making more money than tenure teachers. So I apologize if I misspoke. When we went out and when we negotiated or went through the negotiations with the union, we really did a deep study into where are we competitive relative to other districts in the community, right? Where are we losing our teachers? Where are they going, you know, down the road to South Hadley or East Hampton or Springfield or Chicopee or other surrounding communities? And what we saw is that where we were not competitive was at certain points in the collective bargaining agreement. And where we were competitive was at the top of the scale. There's opportunities for growth at the top that is very comparable to other communities in the area. So that, you know, retention is hard, Councilor McGivern. And, you know, if you saw that slice of the five priorities that we have in Holyoke Public Schools as part of our strategic plan, one of them was retaining staff, retaining and growing our staff. And it was very clear that we needed to do something at different points in the comp model to be competitive with other communities and get people to teach in Holyoke and stay in Holyoke. So that's how that all, you know, that's how we approached the collective bargaining agreement and the comp model that we have. We tried to look, where are we competitive, where are we not, and where do we need to invest to change that?
Which is the contract that saw five thousand dollars on the average going to new teachers and two thousand dollars going to tenure teachers?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, but the brand-new teachers, that's where we couldn't get teachers in the door. I mean, when I first started here, seven years ago, the first-year teacher was making thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And before this last contract, it was above that, but I think it was like forty-six thousand. So, you know, we made an investment in that part of the comp model to try to be competitive, especially in this market where, you know, new teachers are going elsewhere, because Holyoke wasn't competitive with other interviews that they had. So we, you know, I believe now the brand-new teachers are up to about fifty-two thousand dollars to start. But that was an area, that was definitely an area of the comp model where we were not competitive, and we weren't able to get teachers to come here.
I don't want to, you know, it's certainly your prerogative, and maybe down the road, it'll come back towards the school committee and the mayor. But I understand that, and I'm not arguing that. But what I'm trying to say is, the morale issue with not rewarding tenure teachers who stayed, when we saw so many tenure teachers leave for Agwam, Amherst, you know, even Hampshire Regional. You know, we've lost a lot of teachers. They're, and they're good teachers. And I think, I'm not saying, you know, there's different reasons for leaving. But I think the tenure teachers that stayed, you know, could use a little bit of a reward for their loyalty, even if it's for reasons where they're so many years into their career that they just can't find the competitive salary elsewhere. And that's just my thought. Can you explain one thing to me, DE plus I, family engagement? What money is that?
That's not money, that's a department. So that's diversity, equity, and inclusion. So we repurposed, so one of our, you know, with consolidating PEC in Holyoke Middle School and spreading out those students to all of our other schools, we were able to reduce two principals, because we already had enough principals to run those other schools. We repurposed that principal salary to a diversity, equity, and inclusion executive director. So that position is now going to oversee our family engagement team and going to lead our professional development around diversity, equity, and inclusion. That could be working with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force and the subcommittee that the Holyoke School Committee has. That could be, you know, our plan is to have ten professional development sessions led by this person, that then principals can go back to their buildings and turnkey it so that their schools are getting diversity, equity, and inclusion training. Right now, we're doing that on a part-time basis. He's a principal for four days out of the week, and then one day out of the week, he's helping move this work. Next year, he'll be joining us full-time to just support principals in the implementation of that professional development and to help lead our family engagement team. We didn't backfill our family engagement manager when, you know, we recently had somebody become a city counselor, actually. We didn't backfill that, but like, our family engagement team does need a leader to support their work and make sure that they're continuing to provide, you know, quality service to our families.
I thank you. I phrased my question wrong. What I meant was, when I said revenue, was to support what you just said. Is that the ESER money that you used?
Everything that you see in there is general fund money. So we may have taken some things out of ESER and moved it to general fund, but all the numbers that you see there is general fund.
Okay. And last year, you told us the ESER money will probably dry up by fiscal twenty-five. Is that still likely?
ESER money, next year is our last year of ESER money. So we are going to have to, you know, we'll see an increase in our general fund based on Student Opportunity Act, but I'm trying really hard to be real strategic in how we're using that. And we've been able to move most of our counselors, move our academic intervention teachers and coaches. There are some things that are still on ESER that we'll have to have a conversation about whether or not we, it was worth the investment, and we want to absorb it into the general fund and fit it in somehow. But that's a process that, you know, we have one more year to go through it, and next year's budget development process, we're going to have to look at that. An example of that is the deans of management and ops. Like, and I've been very, very upfront that we were making this investment for three years, but if after the three years we're up, we can't afford the deans of management and ops, then that work is going to go back to the principals and the assistant principals and the other admin team. Like, that's one of the first positions that unfortunately, I'm hoping we could absorb them. I'm hoping that Student Opportunity Act is enough, because I know our principals really value those positions. But it's one of those things where it's good to have. But it's one of those things where it's good to have, if you have ESER money, but, um, we'll, we'll have to figure out how to make do without it if, if we can't afford it.
And, uh, and we talked about this last year and it's exactly what I was looking at, um, because if we're not careful, we, we know down, revenue tends to dry up for different reasons.
Yeah.
And if we get stuck with, uh, the lack of revenue to support budgets, especially, I don't know how your unemployment costs are going, but we start getting into unemployment costs, that can, that can tear our budget apart real quickly.
Yeah.
And, uh, so just...
That's been pretty good, Joe. Um, you know, we, we have jobs, so like, we're not laying off people. We, we have openings, so we haven't been spending a lot of money on unemployment.
And just two more things, and they're, they're simple. Just on the charter school reimbursement, is that still off target from what we're promised?
Um, not right now. It's fully funded to what the formula is.
The formula is first year 100%, then it drops?
Yeah, and then, and then it drops on a sliding scale. I know the, the, the last governor changed it a little bit. It used to be over the course of six years. Um, I think they shortened it to like four years, but you get more upfront. So it's something that we just need to continue to closely monitor, um, every budget, every budget year.
Appreciate it. It's, that's good news and hopefully they'll, they'll keep doing it and hopefully, I, I think we have a very pro education governor right now and, uh, I hope that works out good. Um, one quick question, I think you do it every year, but when the budget is final, can you just give the city council one hard copy line item?
Absolutely.
And we just keep it here just to refer to?
We're printing the, like, this was just a short presentation. I have 170-page budget document that may even answer your question, Joe, about foundation budget because there's a whole section on it. Um, but I always make sure that the city council gets a copy of that. We have a public hearing on Tuesday. Um, I hope that the, the budget books are printed for that public hearing and I can give a copy to each school committee member and then I'll make sure that someone brings down a copy to each city councilor as well.
Anthony, I, I thank you personally. Um, you, uh, you've been great. You are our superintendent. You are not just a Hoyoker, you're a product of Hoyoke Public Schools and you get it. Most important, I think you get it as to, you know, it's about education. It's about students first and, and, um, we, we may disagree on some things, but at the same time, you know, I think your heart is in the right place and I know your work ethic is incredible. Thank you and appreciate the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Joe.
Anyone else here, anyone online? Just going through here, seeing no one. All right, thank you, Anthony, very much. We'll now move on to...
Thank you so much.
Veteran Services, page 44. Jesus is online, I do believe.
I am.
Good evening.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing well, uh, Mr. President, and thanks for having me on, councilors. Uh, this is a very simple budget compared to the school. Uh, we're looking at basically just slightly under level funded. Uh, obviously my proposed budget was more than what your, uh, my request amount was more than what you're seeing on the proposed side. We did take a hit on education funds and I think state travel and patriotic events, but it's not a very complicated budget, very similar to last year, and I'm open to questions.
All right, so questions for Veteran Services? Anyone online? Just look here. None? Well, I think your budget is straightforward and no one has any questions for you, so we'll let you have the remainder of your night to yourself.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
Jesus came down to see us. Jesus, thank you for what you do in the, uh, the area that you service because our, our veterans are, uh, are first. And, uh, I know a lot of your work, uh, deals with the, uh, you know, with the benefits that veterans get and making sure that they get them. But since you came on board, you've, you've reached out. You know, we're in the past, I think we've had, uh, a system where veterans had to find Veteran Services. Uh, you go out and find veterans, which is, I tip my hat to you and, uh, the work you do. And I just, I just hope this budget continues to support, support those efforts the best weekend.
Yep, and I thank the city council and the mayor for supporting our, our department and the different training and opportunities that we've had. I think in the next week or so, we're going to be up at the, uh, what's now referred to as the Veterans Home, helping a bunch of, uh, those who are impatient, they apply for welcome home bonuses they may not have received. So I appreciate the support and as long as, uh, I keep doing those things and you guys allow me to keep doing it, I will.
Well, thank you for everything. We appreciate it. Have a great night. Next is Personnel Department, page 10. Do you believe Kelly's online?
I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening. Hopefully I'm as quick as Jesus. Um, thank you all for having me.
We scheduled you for at least three hours.
Um, I think my budget is pretty simple. It's small. There were a few things I wanted to flag. I know, um, workers' compensation and, um, police and fire injury on duty is always, it's not in my budget page, but it's in the back page, which I know you all are familiar with. Um, and I'm happy to say that in workers' compensation, we saved, or there's been an increase, a decrease, sorry, of $126,000 so far, um, from last fiscal year. So that, I think that's a huge win on our part. Um, unfortunately, the IOD has increased, um, this year from last year, almost $200,000. Um, and I have a breakdown I can share. I was going to share it with Jeffrey, but I, I had to confirm some numbers, so I didn't want to send you something in writing that wasn't, um, confirmed yet. Um, I also wanted to share in, in the employee assistant line, that is on my page, the personnel, um, budget, we were overpaying by almost $7,000. So, um, I worked with our service provider and gave them the accurate, um, employee information and so our fees decreased. So we're going to save $7,000 there annually. And, um, unemployment, uh, I found out that we were paying for the schools' services, um, for the third-party administrator. And so the schools happily agreed to pay 85%, which we, um, thought that that was the, the right number because their claims were higher than ours, which is $18,000, $18,173. Um, and, and the city side is only $3,207. So that's a savings on our side of $18,173. Um, also, we were, we were getting fined a lot because the bills weren't getting paid on time. So, you know, we worked with HPS and the Treasurers to ensure that the bills are getting paid on time. Um, and I think Anthony shared that in the health insurance premiums. Um, we saved some money this year. Rates have decreased for, um, employees and the city has saved $300,000 on our budget line and the, the employees have saved about $300,000. What else? Oh, Boston Mutual. So Boston Mutual is our life insurance provider and, um, we started, um, auditing our benefits and found that if, we have 50 employees who have been separated from employment and we were paying their monthly premiums for life insurance. And so, um, Boston Mutual agreed to credit us because, um, it, it wasn't fully our fault. So, um, that's going to be about $9,000. It's 89.48 to be exact. That was it for my fun news. I'm open to questions.
All right. Questions, Councilor McGivern?
Kelly, welcome and, uh, nice job, good presentation. Um, years ago, I would, uh, be asking you 20,000 questions about unemployment. I'm only going to ask you one because there was a point, uh, where I think the schools or unemployment was more or less the city's 100% responsibility. And I'm sure you know what I'm talking about and there weren't challenges being made to unemployment claims. And, and I don't mean if a person has a right to unemployment, that's, that's fine and, and we are self-insured. But when you get situations with the schools, it used to be a person was hired with the, uh, you know, understanding that they would re- obtain their certification within, within three years or they would be laid off. And to me, if a person doesn't have their certification or given a chance to get, to get it within three years, that should not qualify them for unemployment. And we actually won some of those challenges. Does the city challenge any unemployment claims?
So I challenge every unemployment claim, well, almost every. Um, but yes, we, we do and the schools do as well. Um, there's a lot less on the city side. I think we had two this year. Um, and then there's been, um, an uptick, well, uh, maybe two months ago, there was an uptick in fraudulent claims. And so we, um, you know, appealed all of those and were granted, um, the credit for that. So, um, but on the school side, they have a lot larger number because, you know, paras try to, um, file during the summertime. I think the teacher certification thing no longer applies because you heard Anthony speak to the number of vacancies. We can't no longer afford to turn any teachers away because of certification.
I didn't want to ask that because that would scare the heck out of me. But, well, I asked, we're not talking schools right now, right?
Right.
Kelly, does your budget support what you need, especially in the area of health insurance, personnel to handle health insurance?
Yes, um, you all had approved, um, what we were calling, uh, benefits analyst or auditor, which is bulked under the Personnel Assistant right now at this time. Um, and we just started doing the work and working with the Treasurers Office to ensure that, um, we're auditing that so we're not overpaying like, uh, um, the Boston Mutual example. So, and I just hired a head clerk, so now we're fully staffed and, um, I feel like we have a complete team that is going to move the work forward, support the employees and the department heads, so I'm excited for this year.
Kelly, thank you and, uh, not just from us, but I hear this from a lot of city employees. You, you and your staff are doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber? Anyone, uh, Councilor Bacon?
Thank you. Thanks for coming into the hearing and I'm just interested in what you're looking at for the training portion of the budget.
Um, where it says education and training, the 2,500?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I'm looking to get my two, um, higher-level personnel specialists trained in, um, SHRM, so the Society for Human Resource Management, because, uh, as, um, our department is now supporting more staff and more department heads, um, my job is getting a lot more challenging because I have to deal with a lot more discipline and union negotiations and, um, everything under the sun. So it would be great if they learned some of the, the, um, tools to support me with that work, like investigations or, you know, taking, um, employee complaints or, um, helping mediate a, a situation. So I think it would be very beneficial for them to, um, take the course and, um, get the certification if possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Tallman?
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Thanks for the work you're doing. Um, uh, my concern, uh, question is, uh, about the Employee Assistant Program and how is that working out? Are we getting a lot of referrals? We're getting people coming in? Is it being utilized?
Yeah, so it is being utilized. Joy, uh, Hoyoke Medical Center and the Concern EAP is amazing to work with. We actually, um, just talked to her this week about providing, uh, like a seminar for department heads to help them, um, with managing different expectations and just like a, a balance and, um, maybe stress, um, relief or strategies to, um, deal with stress or, um, challenging situations. And so, and that was referred by a department head who had spoke to her, um, and felt that it improved their, um, practice and thought that we should offer it to all department heads to help them. So, um, she's very responsive. She has a colleague also that, um, helps her over there, but we do, um, refer during certain disciplines, we'll refer them to EAP. Um, if there's a drug or alcohol suspicion, we refer them to EAP. And, um, so far, the people that have shared they used, used her services, um, or their services have been pleased with it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that's a very important to have, uh, you know, healthy employees, you know, and enjoying their work and, and, you know, employees that feel good about themselves and, and the work they do are less likely to, you know, get any injuries or if they're under a certain amount of stress. Uh, the other, the other question I have was, um, about, um, you know, the, I think you sent out a thing to most city employees and department heads about some kind of training, you know, um, half-day training or whatever, diversity training and, uh, you know, basically getting along with, you know, other employees. Is that still going well? Is that still being, um, put out there?
Yeah, so there was two, there was a building a racially equitable Hoyoke, which was almost a full-day, um, training. And, um, and then the second one was a implicit bias anti-racist, um, anti-harassment, um, training, which, um, was an hour and it was held by KP law. And so that, that hour one, um, kind of goes over like sexual harassment and other kinds of, um, discrimination. The other one, building a racially equitable Hoyoke, um, it, it didn't go as well, so, um, I'm working with the facilitators to pivot and, um, and see how best we can serve everyone with the sensitive subject that we were talking about.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so that would be all, all city employees would be available?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the mayor mentioned wanting, um, boards and commissioners to also participate when we get it, um, up and running again.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone online? Seeing none. Kelly, thank you very much for everything and we will have a good night.
Thank you too.
We'll move on to the Building Department, page 24. Do you believe Kevin's here?
I'm here.
All right, so we'll turn it over to you. If you have anything you want to talk about the budget and then we'll turn it over for questioning.
Uh, really, I just think we've put together, the numbers are pretty lean. I don't think there's a whole lot to, to cut there. Uh, these numbers are something I think we could work with for the next coming year. Uh, other than that, I'm open to questions.
Okay. Any questions for Councilor McGivern?
Hey, Kevin, welcome.
Thank you.
Demolition of unsafe buildings, uh, something that comes in, I, I know you understand, under your department every year. Uh, looks like the mayor zeroed you out. Can you, or the mayor's about to talk, I think. Mr. Mayor, sorry, Kevin.
No problem.
Uh, there is a, um, ARPA. We're going to have a funding source out of ARPA to take care of demolition, so alternative revenue source so we don't have to raise an appropriate.
Thank you. That's the answer to my question. You didn't have the answer, Kev. Um, how's, how's the zoning official working out?
It's actually working out very well. It's, uh, it's something honestly, I wasn't so sure how it worked out when it was created, but it's, it's actually been working out fantastic. It's been a huge help.
That's good to hear. I, I was at the meeting, I think it was the Ordinance Committee originally, you know, the proposal came in and I, there were, I, you know, not concerns, but a lot of questions, but it, uh, you needed something and I appreciate it. How is your labor force? You got, still got a lot of vacancies?
We still have two openings. I was able to, uh, recently hire the local inspector who, uh, was actually certified and coming, moving out, out west here from the city of Cambridge. He's worked out fantastic. Uh, I still have the Assistant Building Commissioner's position open and one local inspector open. Uh, getting some candidates, but, uh, the state is not granting people permission to take the testing is a problem I've been running into recently, but, um, I'm hopeful we'll get some, uh, qualified candidates in here soon.
Well, thank you and, uh, thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor McGivern.
Councilor Tallman?
Good evening, Kevin. Welcome and appreciate the, the work you've done and since taking over, um, this department. A lot of work that you have and, uh, I appreciate the, the, the team that you have working with you. Um, on, uh, the sealer of weights and measures, is that a position? On, on the sealer of weights and measures, is that a position that's no longer there? Is that being funded somewhere else, or?
Uh, he's no longer a part of this department, is my understanding. He's his own department, has his own budget.
Okay, okay. And on longevity, you asked for 800, the mayor proposed 1,600. Is there a reason for that?
Uh, we'll have one other employee that will be reaching that status at some point this upcoming year.
For the longevity?
So we'll actually have two employees receiving that, yes.
Okay, just unusual to see the bump up that, that they put in there. Okay. And that's all I have for, for this budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here? Anyone online? Oh, Councilor Bacon?
Just briefly, I just want to thank you for the work of the department. It seems like things have been working much more smoothly from the public perception, so it's appreciated.
Thank you, Councilor Bacon. Appreciate that.
All right, there's no other questions for the Building Department. Thank you, Kevin, for everything. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
All right. Board of Health is next, page 40. There's Sean, I see Sean. Sean, good evening.
Hello, good evening.
Yeah, page 40, sorry if you didn't hear me, page 40. Sean, turn it over to you, and then we'll go from there.
All right, uh, well, the budget for the most part, there is a significant change in the personal services item to the tune of about $47,000, so that is a significant increase. The core of that increase is going to be this sanitarian MOA that was signed earlier this year, that I'm grateful that the council approved. That worked out to about $12,000 per inspector for three inspectors, so that, that's a significant portion of the $47,000 increase. The other increases in there are general wage increases over last year, and my overtime was funded this year, and the mayor proposed budget for $4,000. Last year it was $0, so that's also one of the expenses to account for when you look at the increase. If you look under the expenses classification, there is a $2,820 change, and that is a new line item that I have requested, which would be motor vehicle fuel. The animal control officer was provided a new vehicle as of this fiscal year, a Ford F-150. Previously, did not have a vehicle, city vehicle to use, was using a personal vehicle. And so that $2,820 is actually just the same amount that the animal control officer would have received as his auto allowance by city ordinance. And we simply just moved that same dollar amount over to an expense line item. As, I, I'm not certain, this being the first year we've had this vehicle, what exactly his fuel usage is going to be. So we, we went with the number we already had. Other than that, there aren't any significant changes. I will say, as I said last year, I'd just like to highlight, some of these items that are in the budget are emergency line items, and, and they don't necessarily always get used, but their availability is important for the Board of Health to be able to respond to sort of a myriad situations that we get involved in that are sometimes unpredictable. And I'll highlight those as communicable disease services, supplies, emergency health, vacant building board and secure substitute nurses. Those are all items that, they do contribute to the total number. We don't always use them. You know, in this last fiscal year, we had a grant that allowed us to cover any communicable disease services. We won't have that grant this coming year. That, that state grant is going to end, so while it shows $0 in usage here, that was because it was superseded, those funds were superseded by state grant funds that I won't have access to. You know, supplies, emergency health, there, there weren't any emergencies of that nature this year, though we did use the supplies, emergency health the previous fiscal year when we opened up some of the cold weather shelters. So, you know, those funds don't always immediately become necessary, but it is good to have them available when necessary. Substitute nurses, same thing, not necessary this fiscal year because there were specific grant funds from the Department of Public Health that covered costs. This year, you know, substitute nurses would have been specifically COVID clinics, there weren't any substantial foodborne illness outbreaks or anything of that nature where we would need nurses. It was just COVID clinics, and those were covered by the Best Value Grant. And then the final one that I had highlighted is the vacant building board and secure. We have not had any significant demolition projects that have come through the Board of Health. Oftentimes, we had matched the Building Department or done a partial match with the revolving fund, and for a variety of reasons, there, there wasn't a significant demolition project that required a funds match. And so, we were able to use revolving funds in place of what we might have covered with vacant buildings board and secure. Had there been a large commitment of the revolving fund for a demolition, perhaps it wouldn't have been funds available out of that, and then we would have had to dip into the vacant building board and secure. So, I just wanted to highlight that because those don't necessarily show usage, and they do show up as sort of significant expenses, that it's not because they're, they're not necessary, or they're not being used, they're just circumstances that arose this year where they, we had alternative funding sources.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilor Bacon?
Just one general one. It's my understanding that in the case that isn't used, it would go back to the general fund, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
Thanks.
Anyone? Councilor Tallman?
Yeah, thank you, Sean, and welcome. On your, on your positions, are all the sanitarian positions filled, the 1, 2, and 3?
They are not. This will be the third consecutive year that a sanitarian 1 position has not been funded.
Okay, the, the mayor still proposed the money? Is there a possibility of that being filled?
The money is not proposed this year. So the, the current filled position will be funded. That's, you'll see sanitarian 1, what is proposed by the mayor is $49,415. I had requested, you know, twice that amount roughly, which would have been two positions there. You know, setting expectations, that's one position that we're down. I have another sanitarian that is going to be taking maternity leave in the next couple of months, and so going into next fiscal year, there's going to be a time period where we're down two physicians for three months. That's unavoidable. If I can't fill the position because it's not funded, that's a body that's just not available. And then if I have another inspector taking medical leave, again, there, there's not another person to fill in, so, I mean, there is going to be a time where there's a capacity issue, but, you know, I requested funding anticipated there.
And on the other positions that the, when you came before us a few months back about the increases, so the increases did go through when you did hire the people, actually employees you had onboard, and they stayed?
They stayed at a more competitive rate, and it's, it's been, you know, a, a great success. They're, they're being paid at a much more competitive rate compared to positions in the region, and, and they all elected to stay when offered this, this new rate.
Okay. And on your auto allowance was dropped by the mayor about 4,000. Is that the, with that 2,800 is filled in with the motor vehicle?
Two things. So I, I had proposed another inspector, which would have been the other sanitarian 1 that is not being funded under the mayor's proposed budget, and they're entitled to an auto allowance. And then the inspector of animals, the animal control inspector, we moved his funding out of auto allowance to the fuel line item now that he'll no longer be using his own vehicle.
Okay, so that's why the difference is, can there be any cut in that from the council at the 14,000, or is that something you definitely need?
That's all set by ordinance. Those positions are all entitled to those funds by city ordinance. It's $2,820 per inspector per year, $235.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Sean, it looks like there was a significant investment in the salaries to help you retain employees in your department. And I'm just looking at your overtime numbers, given what you've said about the leave. So it sounds like it would be safe to say you may be coming in with some transfers from the unfilled positions for the folks that will be covering for the three months? Would that be a fair expectation?
It would be. You know, I, I requested 4,000, a more modest request than the previous year where I requested 10,000. I think I came before the Finance Committee three, possibly four times this year, looking for overtime transfers. Without any staffing shortages, overtime is just a function of the Board of Health. There are many activities that happen in the city on weekends and in the evenings after the 8:30 to 4:30 workday, and so my inspectors per their contract are entitled to overtime to work those. So if, you know, the city would like us at, you know, patronales, if they want us at, you know, the St. Patrick's Day weekend festivities, festivities, the Fourth of July, you know, any of the other events that take place on, you know, after hours, the Armory Yard, for instance, has been happening on Main Street, attendance at board meetings, those are all mandatory overtime hours if there's going to be inspectors there.
Right.
So there's that consumption.
Yes, okay. And so just looking at the 175 relative to the building boarding, et cetera, would it be fair to say if we took some money out of that because you have a very significant increase in your budget in total, and that then we could look for other funds if it was needed since it really hasn't been used and it's a pretty big budget number?
That 175 is actually animal control services, and that's a contract.
Oh, am I looking at the wrong line?
That's a TG.
Okay. Can you point me to the correct line relative to the?
It's right above it, 5,000.
I might have circled the wrong one.
5,000.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry about that. I was looking at the wrong line.
Anyone else? Councilor McGivern?
Sean, welcome, appreciated. I almost answered my question. The, we have an animal control inspector, and, and we got the new vehicle. How's that new vehicle working out?
It's working out well. It will be working out just a little bit better when we're able to get into the outfitter. The full design specification is that the rear seat will be removed and a kennel, a specialized kennel insert will go into that rear seating area, and some lights will be mounted on the vehicle. So one of the concerns and one of the reasons we had requested a vehicle is, is safety. Removing animals from the road in high-traffic situations can be dangerous, and so there'll be some strokes like you would see on an emergency response vehicle, and there'll be, you know, modern safety equipment installed in this vehicle that'll protect the well-being of animals as well. So I am very much looking forward to providing Eric those utilities.
And I may be a devil's advocate here, I am a firm believer that we still need the services of the Thomas J. O'Connor people, and that would be the $175,000 under expenses?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, and I have total agreement.
Knowing that in the past, other city councils have raised questions to that, can you just walk us through that, your, your position, and, and again, I'm an advocate of it, but I'd just like to be the devil's advocate here?
Yeah, certainly. So Thomas J. O'Connor provides wraparound services when Eric is not available. Eric is a PSA employee, so he has more flexibility in his hours than perhaps an age employee would, but when he's not working, they're able to provide his coverage. When he's on vacation, they provide coverage. They also provide a lot of the services. So when we rescue animals, for instance, those animals go to TJO. When people surrender dogs, or when dogs have to be seized, for instance, you know, they're abandoned, or they're found to be in abusive situation, when they need specific medical attention, when we have to cremate roadkill, when animals have to be euthanized, when, you know, animals have testing that's required to be done, you know, there's suspicion of rabies, or, you know, when you have rabies, for instance, suspicion of rabies, there's, there's the quarantine portion where sometimes we quarantine animals at TJO under supervision. And then there's, you know, the other side where sometimes the animal has to be euthanized, and then, and there's a testing process with some of the animals remain. So they provide services that we are not able to render in this city because we don't have an animal control facility. We don't have a pre-ventarium, we don't have specialized personnel in the city that are available to do inspections of the animals or observation. And they also provide some additional animal control services, support of Eric, for instance, if he has to seize a large number of animals, or if he doesn't have equipment immediately that he needs for a specialized situation, like a, you know, a large bird, an eagle, a hawk that's injured, an owl, things of that nature, they're there to sort of act as that additional resource to make sure that we're able to render services immediately.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilor Bacon?
This is just a procedural question, if I may. So you talked about TJO and the service of roadkill. What is the proper path for a resident to follow in that instance? I got a call on one kind of late in the process, so I'm just interested in saying what would be the most effective route, if that's the case.
Well, the best route is to call the office. That's the most direct route. Now, we're only open 8:30 to 4:30, like everyone else in City Hall Annex, which we leave a message. We have a voicemail, we have two clerks. We also have an email, we have the individual emails of the inspectors, which are listed on our website, and we also have a BOH, as in Board of Health, which is BOH@hollyoke.org. Any one of those ways is acceptable. One of the misconceptions, and I think one of the areas we run into with roadkill, is that if an animal dies on private property, that is not a service that we render.
Right.
If a deer comes out of the woods and dies in your yard, the city does not bear that burden. That's an animal that was on private property and it died on private property. And I think the majority of roadkill confusion that we run into are dead animals, I should say, not roadkill necessarily, but dead animal confusion, is that many people sort of expect the city to pick up any animal that dies on their property, and that's just not the way that this is structured. Once it's on private property, it's, it is the property owners. But otherwise, if it's in the street, it's in a public place, it's in a park, it's at a school, you can call, you can email, and we're usually able to respond to it within 24 hours. There are some areas of the city that are covered by the Department of Transportation and not by city employees because they're state highway, and that also is sometimes some areas where if we get the call, we refer it to the Department of Transportation, but that is their responsibility, and, and we sort of have to rely on them to, to carry out their own duties.
Okay, because a question came from a constituent to me. It was kind of late, it was on a public road. It was on the, near the intersection of Apron out in West Holyoke. And so the question was, if it was on the weekend when the person saw it, should they call your office or TJO as an example? So...
They should call office.
Go through.
If it's at Beaver, I will say, there, there's been a Beaver on Apron Highway for a while now, and we've been calling the state repeatedly about it, and for some reason, they are refusing to pick it up. It's troublesome for me as well.
Okay, because that was pretty bad.
Yeah, it's, I, we called again today. We've called four times, I'm not...
It's, it's almost resolved by Mother Nature by now, but it was pretty bad.
I know the one.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone further? Let me check online. All right, thank you very much, Sean. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last on our list is Public Works. Come on in.
Commissioners are always welcome, aren't they?
I said, come on in.
I've got good commissioners, so.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. We'll turn it over to you, Carl, and we'll go from there.
All right, this is my first budget, put together in about two months, so it's kind of new for me. So I'm going through this process based on what was happening last year. I did a couple adjustments to increase my budget, but then talking to the mayor, we've tried to figure out something a little better to keep in line. So it's a very lean budget right now, and trying to make it work as best as possible.
Okay. So with that, turn it over to questions. Do you want a minute to catch up? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get the page. Page 32, I apologize.
It starts at page 28 with 43.
I got 32, so 28 and then 32, so...
28, 31, 32... Twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-seven, and sewer budget too at the end.
All right, so Councilor Bacon.
Thanks for coming in, and I appreciate it, your first year dealing with this, um, and since we're starting with forestry and I know the challenge has been the other staffing and it might not be evident on this page, I was just wanting to check in on what the status of that is and what you're seeing in the new budget relative to the.
So we initially, what I requested was for a tree climber and maintenance man, but the problem is it's, as you know, it's diff, uh, there's a difficulty trying to find, uh, qualified staff to do that kind of work. So the mayor proposed that we go to, uh, contracted forestry services, and I think there's an order tomorrow in the Finance Committee.
Okay.
To go for, I believe it's under fifty thousand, we said, under sixty, I forget the number.
Yep, so, right now, we're exhausting a con, resources on a contract.
Correct, right now, there's a contract for sixty thousand dollars that there's a, uh...
For this fiscal year and that got, that got the work started.
Yes.
Um, and so, we have to go back, I think I brought this up before, um, back to the union to revisit the tree climber position.
Right.
Salary range, um, and then also, I reference again, the exercise, and we're trying to scale back and then as we go forward. So what you have in front of you for tomorrow night is a hundred-and-fifty thousand of free cash to continue contracted services as we work toward building capacity to build up our tree climbing division on forestry.
So just as a follow-up, and I think I voiced this in Finance Committee, my concern is that we have a quarter of a million-dollar vehicle just sitting there.
Yep.
Which is just a crime, you know? So is there a way that we could cross hire in another part of the budget and supplement? Like, we go back and forth with, uh, Fire Department and DPW somehow to make use of it? I mean, do we have any ability to cross?
Our, well, our, our forester, he does use it for emergency work.
Okay.
And so he does need it, need the vehicle, um, I don't know if we've used it for any other things, maybe probably for.
The only thing I can think of is the tree lighting.
Yeah, the tree lighting, but, but the whole intention, it's a new machine, and it's a very good machine.
Yeah.
And we'd like to use it in next, you know.
Right.
Get the staff to use it.
Right.
Uh, I hate to see it go or put up on auction or sell it because eventually we're still going to need it.
Right, I hear you on that.
So, so the challenge has been is that tree climber position, the max salary is, and then we have to hire, so that, that's.
But can I just ask that with the truck as we have it now, can we at least get things like branches that are covering up a crosswalk sign trimmed? I mean, do we have that capacity in the city?
The problem is.
With what we have for staffing?
No.
So, uh, one person can't use the truck and we can't put a general labor on the truck to clear?
You need special licenses to be a tree climber. I forget what licenses are in, in the state of Massachusetts to operate a boom truck and to operate, uh, to be a tree climber itself, I think it's a four-G license.
So our forester can't drive the truck?
He can, but don't forget that he's also the Parks Department Supervisor too, so he can't be doing both jobs at the same time.
So is he in here for full-time as the forester or part-time?
He's not even, he's here as a full-time as a forester, but he's also running the Parks Department, which has a staff of, I forget, about twelve people.
So it seems like it would be perhaps a fair representation in the budget for it to be put out there a little differently going forward, because I don't, you know what I mean? Yeah. Thanks.
Councilor McGivern.
The forester, we all know, union position?
Yes.
And the tree climber is a new proposed position?
It was an existing position that was on the books, but was never funded.
Okay. It was never filled, and then we did, we did cut the funding, maybe last year.
Yeah, I'm saying before this past fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, it was never funded before.
Yeah, we cut it.
We cut it.
It was funded every year prior to this one, except it was never filled.
Right.
And so as we go into the fiscal year, it was never filled, it was moved somewhere else for, to meet other needs, so.
So, I'm trying to be nice and not say strike four, but I might say it tomorrow. Why is the union dictating this to the city of Hoyoke?
Because there's a salary range for that position.
I don't care.
I.
Get a non-union person and put them on the truck and tell the union to come at us. It's a quarter of a million-dollar truck. I thought it was grumpy last night.
I thought you were fine, you got a coffee.
I, it's, this, unions don't run the city. Mr. Mayor, I'm not talking to Carl, you know, I'm talking, I don't get it. I don't get it. Quarter of a million-dollar truck we can't use. Now, I, I thought this was going to be in the budget and was going to resolve this year the way you've been talking, but we're not even going after it?
No, 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 the, when we talked about this and you gave me the strike two on the truck, I, I shared with you the exercise that we're trying to implement going into the new fiscal year and what we're going to do as we get closer to year-end. And so the challenge here, and from what I'm told from, from Carl, they're not refusing to revisit that, we have to do impact bargaining, bring them back to the table, it's a process. And once that change is made, I can then, at that time, go to this body and say, hey, I need to increase this dollar amount on this line item so we can finally get it filled. That's the, the, the strategy, we're not refusing or the, the count, the, the union's not refusing, it's just we got to get around to it, go through that process so we can finally get to where we need to be. Until then, I've brought to you something that we can get something going so that what's really important here are these trees and all these calls that we're all getting about these trees going on around the city, so we can start on July one moving forward. So I'm coming, it's a, it's a transition plan, um, as we work toward the goal of getting bodies so we can finally get this truck adequately staffed to take care of these problems on our own. That's what I shared the last time.
I, I understand that, and, and forgive me, I'm all in favor of contracted services because even with a tree climber and a full-time forester, we still have plenty of work to contract out, and I have no problem with that. I have a problem is we're paying interest on a depth service for a quarter of a million dollars and not using the truck. And to zero out on the tree climber position in your budget.
Well, it's zeroed out because we're going to raise in taxation and not fill it because no one's applying for it, that, I, I, this is, there's a intent and plan to revisit this to get it there. We've just got to take care of some knots that are happening that are not allowing us to get there. Um, but to your point though, and Carl, I don't know, there's an open discussion, uh, to Councilor Bacon's point, there's no way at all that the forester can have a laborer come with him and take care of some trees on that truck?
On emergency basis, yeah, you can do it.
Emergency basis, and what if like he spends Tuesdays focused on trees and then all the other days on, something create, is that allowed or is that anything against that?
No, I don't think there's anything against that, because he's only going to be certified to go up in a, in a tree truck right now.
Let's talk more about that and see how we can be proactive or whatever, but, so that way we can meet in the middle of the year.
Councilor McGivern, or?
I'm good.
Councilor Bacon, and then I have online, Councilor Givern and Councilor Rivera next.
Thanks, and, and just to follow up, I'm not a tree expert, but I don't think these branches need somebody to climb the tree on Homestead. They're not big, heavy branches, they're just covered with leaves. So, um, I appreciate anything you can do in that regard, and I acknowledge that you inherited this, um, the Lynda Bacon note to self is, don't vote for a vehicle unless we know we have the staff to run it, so, but you inherited it, so now we just have to fix it. Thank you.
Councilor Givern.
Thank you, um, I was just wondering, um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, I was just curious about the comment about the city forester also running the parks or supervising the parks, can that be clarified? I think I misunderstood something.
No, that's true, uh, the city forester, he runs the Parks Department as far as the maintenance of parks.
Oh, so he does forestry and parks maintenance?
Correct.
But that's still one position, the city forester, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then my other comment was just going to be a little smarty, but wondering why we got a truck before we had people to run it, but I realize you weren't here for that, neither was I, so, thank you very much.
Councilor Rivera.
Thank you, um, I guess my question is simple, and, well, a lot of it got clarified with, uh, with Councilor Givern's question, but, um, with regards to the, like, the Parks Department and the maintenance, um, I, I, I guess I have questions because I play softball a, and I, and I see the parks, and it's like, not to say that we don't do our work because I see them out there putting in their, their, their work, but I saw in one of the line items that the budget was like sixty-five thousand dollars for park maintenance. Okay, like, can we, can we speak to what, what, what that is, like, with regards to, like, what does the sixty-five thousand dollars go to, like, just cutting the grass? Or is it with regards to redoing some of the fields for like the people that are playing the fields or utilizing the fields, or, or, or just cleaning up the parks? Um, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, it's, it's mostly any kind of repair and maintenance to the parks, so if there's fertilizer to be put down, seeding to be pu, to be put down on the parks, uh, any kind of repairs to the parks itself, that's where.
How about weeding? Does weeding count?
That's, well, yeah, fertilizing and, uh, you know, uh, weed control.
All right. All right, thank you.
Councilor Givern, your hand still up, you have another question, or?
Um, nope, I'll take it back down.
Okay. Anyone else? With regards to all the pages, not just one.
We're going pages?
Want to go page by page, or?
Yeah. Whatever you want, yeah.
Next page would be, what page do you have there?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
That's the Office of the City Engineer.
So the engineer department?
Oh, go ahead, question. Carl, I'm not, I know it's a quick budget on your part, but under professional engineering services.
No.
Sorry, the wizard got me. Sorry, um, Carl, under professional engineering services, the requ, the request is seventy-five thousand?
Was seventy-five thousand, yes.
Okay, and what, what, what was that for?
That was for surveys, for road surveys.
May I add to that?
Sure. The professional engineering services is so that the engineer had the flexibility to outsource when he's over capacity. I think last year we, we gave, I think, I don't know if we did a, um, can't remember, I think it was free cash, because the engineer's just started getting his feet wet, didn't have a, a, an associate engineer, and so we gave a little over a hundred thousand, I think, to, to give him some flexibility to transition into the role. Um, and so, that's what that is, um, mainly used for, for outside consulting.
So, I mean, the reduction is, we now have an associate engineer?
It was my, well, there, there is a, um, some help, uh, he's, actually, they're doing great, they're doing a lot, um, can certainly use the funding, I just thought I'd come up with a different plan and support so that we don't have to raise an appropriate, although I don't have a plan at this time.
Am I a stop, everyone? Go ahead.
Okay, for clarification on that line item, um, to build off of what the director was saying, so the engineer, he actually put that dollar figure together in response to recent discussions by city council committees with respect to approving certain roads as public ways, and this is part of the consulting services associated with road surveys and other mass general law as well as city ordinance requirements in order to get city council to approve a public way. So without this funding, moving forward on any sort of public ways doesn't have a funding source right now.
Right, now is the list that you provided, and he did too, on those.
Yeah, and I think, and goes in line with what I was saying, you know, it's, it's things that he can't, um, uh, pursue on his own internally, so he, he looks for alternative, um, expertise to help with the work and, including this, this particular project that's mentioning, um, Mary's mentioning. So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I, I was, um, hammered last night about a four-point-seven percent increase potential, so I'm trying to, I got to be as conservative and creative as possible when it comes to these things, doesn't mean we won't, don't want to do it, I just need a different, different plan rather than, um, you know, whether, if it's a line item transfer later, um, on a surplus, uh, budget, uh, line item, um, or something, that's all.
Councilor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to follow up on that, I think that's a fair comment that the mayor makes because the ward councilors have been asked to look over that list, reach out to our constituents, and come up with a list that actually needs attention. And so I think it's fair to say we don't know what that list will be yet, and when we get further into the year, we'll have a better idea of what would be needed in terms of services to actually follow up on it. So I think it'll, that'll kind of pan out in the new fiscal year from what I'm seeing so far, anyway. Thanks.
Just to add to the discussion, um, so, many years ago, I did a study in Hoyoke with respect to accepted roadways and those roads that are not accepted. Only accepted roadways are eligible for reimbursement through the Chapter Ninety process, and this was probably nineteen ninety-eight that I did this study. So there, there was that list of roads, which you'd be surprised at what is not accepted, that the city does complete maintenance on, um, and the, the total number of miles. And back in nineteen ninety-eight, that was worth about fifty thousand dollars a year in lost Chapter Ninety revenues. So moving, investing in this actually will generate additional revenue from the Commonwealth through the Chapter Ninety program.
So I will just add that in conversations with our engineer, there, we have some roads, and I'm only speaking about the word I represent, that are kind of ready to be accepted, if you will, that aren't in the book basically due to paperwork issues. And then there are other roads that have large challenges, one that we've discussed in depth recently. So, you know, there's a whole, uh, variety and range of costs to bring them up to code in my discussions with the engineer, and so I think it's a pretty complicated situation that bears some study before we will actually know what we can do, um, relative to accepting them or, or not. So, um, I, I think it'll be a lot of work for all of us in the new year to sort it all out.
Councilor Anderson Burgos, did you have a question?
I did not, I didn't raise my hand.
All right, the, you, the picture just came up, so I don't know if you're.
Oh, no, it's okay, thank you.
All right, any, mayor?
The biggest, um, addition in the engineer version of the budget, um, and is the grant manager writer position, I'm going to pass it to Commissioner Monahan to speak a little bit more to it and, uh, why it, you know, the, the DPW is as strongly advocating for this to help with mitigating future liabilities and taking advantage of opportunities that we might not be because, you know, we don't have such a person leveraging such resources, so.
Sure. All right, thank you. Um, so, so yes, this, this position will pay for itself probably within the first couple of months of being funded. There, there, there's a lot of funding sources out there, they're not all in one place, it's not easy to just go to, here's a grant program, there are multiple grant programs with respect to both supporting our stormwater, water quality, transportation, um... other infrastructure improvements. And I know as a grant writer myself, we've missed a number of opportunities. So this position would stay informed, investigate, and ideally funded at 75,000, because when we did our survey of what other communities might pay for this position, we want someone that comes in knowing how to do this, knowing how to both politically lobby for grant assistance as well as do good applications. And it's also going to provide assistance to the director and the engineer with respect to looking at those federal programs that we have compliance challenges with. We don't want to get caught back in being non-compliant, whether it's with our MS4 permit, our NIPD's permit, and other elements within the city, that there's a regulatory mandate for us to do it right.
And the reason why it's at the 63340 is because the ordinance, we can't pay more than the mid-max somebody new coming into the position. So that's, I want the 75, but we have to, we have to put it in order and revisit the ordinance and-
So the engineer spoke to the union and he feels that, he said the union doesn't see it in that particular union group.
So in our Schedule A, there's grant manager, grant writer. Tanya, if you can help me, when we were researching this, trying to figure out where the best way to try to bring-
But this is more than just a grant writer.
What's that question again?
We're talking about the grant writer/grant manager, so I don't know if in the union contract, there is a grant manager in there.
In the Schedule A, there is a grant manager position that we created with the police department. So we were having that conversation. I think the police department actually wanted to change the ordinance so that they could be a higher schedule. But there is a grant manager in the Schedule A currently.
Unless, are you saying that in the union contract, there's a grant manager position?
It's not in the union contract, it's an ordinance position.
So that's what I mean, when we're creating positions, it's got to fit somewhere in these different buckets.
Yes.
Unless we go to the union and create a new one.
If the position responsibilities remain the same as the one that is already created and they want to pay for it within the Schedule A ordinance, they can also do that.
That's what I'm dealing with.
It will be different.
We would have to have a job description and do that.
Alright, so Counselor Bacon?
So if it will be different, then it needs to be created, it needs to be approved by ordinance before it can be funded. Just FYI.
So it wouldn't be as easy, simple as just posting on July 1. We'd have to go through a process and make sure that the position is appropriately reflected somewhere, whether if it's in a union contract or Schedule A, that it's defined somewhere in one of those accepted formats.
We'll look for the available one, only because, again, each day we're without someone in that position we're losing access to and knowledge about funding.
Yep, Counselor.
Just to clarify, so depending on the duties of the position would depend what grade within the schedule they would be. So if the duties are not the same, you don't want to put it in the same category. You'd want it to be in the proper category and the labor attorney that consults to our law department is the one that vetted that kind of thing in the past. So, you know, do the rating of the level of the job, et cetera. So it seems like you'd want it to match what you want the person qualified to do. And I would just note, I mean, there's a ton of increases in salaries and positions in this budget. But you want to, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying overall, not your budget, the whole budget, the big budget. But I think it would be important to have it line up with what it is you want or need.
Or line it up with what's existing, just to get it started.
That was the intent, yeah.
Lined up with what's existing right now, to get it in there, can it be then revisited and then like reevaluated? So we can increase the salary?
You would have, I don't know if you're, you'd have to change the job.
Yeah, change, yeah.
Right.
Let's chat more about it, but just know that that was the intent behind why this line item is there, is to have someone to proactively get these things. I guess on our end, we have to figure out the best course of action and we can certainly bring it back to this body. Whether or not we can support it within this plan or propose a different plan, but just know that that's the intent.
Alright, so Counselor Rivera is online.
I guess one of the things for me, and I think it's important that position, I echo the sentiment of the chair of the commission. But I filed an order, I believe, when I first came on the council about a grants manager working out of the mayor's office so that they can work in collaboration with department heads around a lot of this. Because eventually, I mean, the police department needs a grants manager, DPW needs a grants manager. I'm sure OPEC needs a grants manager as well. And before you know it, every department will probably need their own form of grant management and grant writers. So, I mean, I'm wholeheartedly in belief of the position, but it's just, how do we consolidate and make sure that we're using the best? I mean, using them, like pay the person the money that we pay them, but making sure that they're helping out across all departments versus just one particular department.
So my response there, Counselor Rivera, is that these grants, they're specialized. So it's not, I know from the outside looking in, you think grant manager, you should be able to apply for any grant that comes your way. And that's not necessarily the case. Every, you know, and it all depends on the complexity behind the grant, too, and that really-
Well, if they partner with, I would assume if they're partnering with, it's just like the Safe Neighborhood Grant. They partner with the city, the city doesn't necessarily deal with it, but the police department does in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. So like, there's a variety of entities that come together to join up, to do these grants. We just need someone to help manage that across the departments. The specialty can be still done within departments. We just still need someone to help manage all of that and to be able to pay attention to opportunities, like she's mentioning, across all departments, not just one particular department. Because it's going to be expensive for us to pay 100 grand for somebody in DPW and another 100 grand in police.
So those public safety related grants, I wouldn't expect any of those employees to know how to leverage federal dollars and infrastructure related grants. But to your point, though, out of the mayor's office, and again, and I'm going to keep advocating for the CAFO, the CAFO would do exactly that, work with these departments and making sure that there is that level of collaboration in not only leveraging these grant resources, but appropriately managing it with our auditor's office and make sure that there's proper reporting going on and that there's no deficits and line items at year ends, transitioning to the new fiscal year, and all that good stuff. But that, you know, I wouldn't expect the folks that are tackling the safer grant go after MS4 related grants and infrastructure grants. They're a little unique and specialized on that. But I think, you know, as we continue to build internal capacity, eventually, we will, we would have an appropriate oversight authority that knows, guide departments in how to appropriately manage grant resources. If that makes sense, a little bit.
Anyone further? Next page.
Department of Public Works Administration. Page 32.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Carl, for coming down to go over your budget here. On the new position here, Principal Account Clerk, do you have somebody in that position? Or you're planning on hiring somebody?
What we're doing is that we had a part-time clerk who did the parking and helped out with the rest of DPW. So we took that out of that budget of the parking decks and parking enforcement and put it into DPW administration and made it a full-time position. Especially now what we do with our shut-off season and, you know, people taking their vacation times. It's become a burden to our department because we're using overtime to fill in those gaps right now.
Okay, so that's definitely a position that's needed at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what happens to the job they were doing before? Does that continue? You said it was a part-time, or the parking clerk? They had somebody else doing that now?
So the whole plan is to have everybody be able to do everybody's job down at DPW. Because they're a little, not to their fault, but they were a little bit more specialized because they were always told, this is your job and you do it this way. You're only in charge of receivables, you're only charged purchasing, you're only charged of parking. Well, obviously, that doesn't work, everybody needs to know what everybody else is doing or how to do it. So that's the plan, to have, you know, a nice administrative staff that could do everything.
So if somebody's missing in one spot, they can hit, pick it up, and do something else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So we'll go to the next page.
Thirty-four, city property.
Counselor Givener?
Carl, on energy, streetlights, there's kind of a history of the cost that streetlights, running streetlights are. The mayor's below your request, is there any plans of how we're going to pay those bills, or?
Yes, so, just pulling up my memo to the council that was submitted, when I submitted the budget. In streetlights, this is the year we achieved our, I guess you guys put in a lot of work to convert to the LED lighting. And so this is the year where you're actually seeing the savings. I'm trying to find the exact number, but I want to say it's, oh, right here, decreased by 180,592. So due to the work that you guys did put in a couple of years ago, converting the lamps to LEDs, this is the year where you now save 180,592, so that's why the decrease.
Which line are we on, please?
Uh, page-
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, which would be streetlights.
Anyone online?
And there includes, it's streetlights and, streetlights and, I know it's probably not adding up to exactly 180,000 when you compare the two numbers, but the, there's two kinds of streetlights, I guess. And in that line item is to fund both of those costs. But that's why the decrease, though, because in the street lamps specifically that light up and illuminate our streets, you have that savings.
That's a positive.
That's good news.
That's a positive.
Good job.
Alright, next page.
Page number 36, highways and bridges.
Can we, can we go to thirty?
Counselor Tomlin?
Stay with the thirty, thirty-five?
Thirty-four?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
I think it's under the city property. Just a quick question on, it seems like in all the fire stations, that the request was a certain amount and it was cut four, five, six thousand dollars. Just wanted to know what that was about.
Where are we?
The police station, central fire station, Elmwood, Highland.
Yeah, I level funded them. You know, again, that creativity in our, you know, you cut it a little bit and if you really need it, we'll come back to the council and get a transfer somewhere just so that we can try to maintain an appropriate, a better tax rate when we get there. But there's also going to be, you know, the fire department does, and, you know, I'm not saying that we're going to use this to do regular maintenance. They do have their revolving account where they take care of some, they've taken care of some capital needs within the buildings. There are some projects we're going to be doing under ARPA to take care of some capital needs in the police building and the annex and DPW. In fact, you have a free cash transfer to take care of, it's the DLS, right? Not Division of Local Services, but-
Labor Service.
Labor Services to take care of some findings. They've concluded in a report. So there's a lot of capital related things we're going to be doing. But as far as general maintenance, you know, I've level funded and if it turns out that we're hitting that, the limit, and we really need more, we'll come back and get a line item transfer from some surplus somewhere.
Okay, I appreciate, yeah, because it seems like the ones on top, too, the annex.
What I did is that I just did a factor for inflation when I originally did the budget, so that's the reason why. But, you know, level funding, you know, we can never tell with buildings what kind of emergencies come up, especially the older buildings. So, you know, so we'll see it when it comes down during the budget year where we're at.
Okay, yeah, today I happened to be at the senior center and one of the things that was, other than the, you know, she was in last night, was the gas, and I know you had a contract with the gas, you know, the vehicle, motor vehicle expense. And I just noticed here that it was, you cut 5,000 from the maintenance for the senior center. And I know it's fairly new building, but it is 10 years old. So I'm just wondering if something does need something worked, that if there's not appropriate money, that there'll be some funding for that?
Yeah, something ever, you know, be able to respond if I, and we have funding sources that we can work together and tap into to take care of things when things really hit the fan. But that dollar amount doesn't really take care of those kind of emergencies. That's general maintenance, wear and tear, cleaning, you know, things of that nature. Not necessarily, you know, the elevator went. You're not going to find that in that line item, that's a capital related thing that will probably be coming here. Just like, you know, you have 100,000 in your free cash transfer discussion tomorrow for the elevator over at the War Memorial. So, yeah, those large, those emergency, we need to deal with this, you know, versus just regular wear and tear, day-to-day maintenance, things are separate.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Next was 36, highways and bridges. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So could you just talk a little bit about the 51104 line? Because I know that's been an area that it's been very difficult to recruit in. And I'm just seeing by the numbers, it looks like a different strategy.
Oh, okay, I'll see.
You take a stab. This is a tricky one.
Yeah, it's been very difficult to hire HMEOs. CDL licenses are hard to come by. We got lucky lately that we've hired three new employees. But I've been trying to hire more of these people since I started here, and they're just hard to come by. So we're just going with what we have here and maybe hiring one more. So we're funded at four, but we probably, like the mayor said, is we're trying to keep a level budget right now. And if we need more, you know, when the year comes in and we have the proper funding for it, we'll ask for more HMEOs.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Givener?
A tremendous amount of money, you know, because of surpluses there with the vacancies, has been transferred out of that line item into other areas of your budget this year. Is that taken into consideration in this budget?
No, it's not. And it'd be a tighter budget because I'll be looking over it more than just spending. I don't know what was happening before, but I think most of the time, I think we just, we have to spend on our budget what we know we have to do for the year. I think a lot of the stuff that we were doing, were just orders that were given to my previous administration. And they were just taking care of it without having a funding source. source. So, I'm trying to be more careful this year, making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do within our budget, and then if comes of any emergencies or something has to be funded somewhere else, to go through a proper account instead.
The, the other thing too, counselor, is, and I'm sure he's gonna go over this shortly, he's tried to, you know, when it comes to overtime, for example, and there's been transfers in the past out of these line items to appropriately fund overtime because it wasn't fully funded, um, he's got an overtime strategy to address those. And then also, our energy lines were never fully funded in the past. Um, the dollars amount you see there were numbers I took from G and E and I fully funded them in the budget, um, their est- their estimates. Um, and so, that's another thing that, you know, we won't be anticipating him to transfer funds over to cover. There are probably gonna be some things here and there, um, to his point also about orders that are coming in and, you know, we try to, especially from this body, obviously, you know, we try to make sure that if we can, we will respond and other things, you know, if we can't, we'll have to come up with a plan and figure out how to, uh, address it. Uh, but, as far as, you know, we're really trying to control that excessive transferring from, from, you know, surpluses unless, you know, we really need to, and there's some sort of strategy behind it.
In the property, uh, property maintenance demolition worker and laborer, are they filled?
Uh, yes. That, that position is filled.
Because it looks like the first part of this year, no dollars were spent.
No, we filled it actually when I came on board. When I came on board, a couple of weeks after, the person got his asbestos license and he was waiting to get another license, so I provisionally put him in that position until he could get, get the other license, and that wasn't his fault, it was more, uh, mass DOT that was to hold up than anything else.
And Carl, do we really need ROKA?
Yes. They, they do help a lot, especially with the shoveling, you know, during the wintertime and helping them with the alleys and cleaning up some of our roadways, which takes a lot of stress off our highway department.
How do you oversee it though, the work that they do?
Uh, our superintendent of outdoor works is out there taking a look at it with, you know, with the jobs that they're doing. We've had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, and we expressed some concerns that we have. One of the concerns that we had, and we brought it to their attention, was that the supervisor was doing all the work while the rest of the crew was not really working. So, we brought it to their attention and they've been rectifying the situation.
Been pretty lean on snow removal the last few years. We're due. Thank you all.
Made some calls to the mother nature.
Counselor Bacon.
Um, just looking at supplies for traffic lines, so, this has been kind of a chronic problem, and I'm wondering if this funding goes through, will we, in the new fiscal year, be able to get a lot of the lines that haven't been done now for probably three years done?
Try to get fifty thousand dollars worth.
Well, can you do the ones that are on the roadways that intersect first?
Yeah. I mean, it's just- No, I understand. I'm saying that-
It's scary out there.
It's, you know, I've asked for fifty thousand and I got fifty thousand.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, and that work is gonna, is gonna happen.
On top of that, Carl, if you solicit quotes that will, you know, hey, we could do this much, if we had this much money, I'd be more than happy to bring that to the, because it is a problem.
Yes.
Citywide with these-
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks and lines, and we gotta be consistent with, you know, getting them repainted and whatnot, and I think we all share that concern, and I'd be happy to figure out how we can get you what you need to get it done. So, just keep us posted.
And just, I think there was a transfer last week, I think a couple of weeks ago, regarding buying paint, you know, a paint, so we're gonna be doing for this fiscal year, ending-
Okay, great.
You know, some line painting too.
Great. Thanks.
No, that was a transfer I did.
All right. Anyone else on thirty-six? Next page.
Uh, thirty-seven, auto equipment maintenance. I kept it pretty, I mean, we kept it level from last year. I think the biggest de- decrease was in the repair, maintenance, maintenance of vehicles. And I think there was, that was something that happened with one of the vehicles last year that we had this, we had a, we had a major breakdown and that we needed money to re- repair it. But, that's why it's at seventy thousand dollars this year instead of one oh two, five hundred from last year.
Counselor Tom.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, the motor equipment repairmen, you listed the three, uh, you got two, you asked for two, and you got the two. So, how, is that the one that's, uh, working out of your department? Is that the one floating with the fire department and the police department?
I asked for three, I got two, but it looks like the budget number's the same.
Oh, wait.
So, maybe I did get three.
Um, it says increased by one on the notes.
Yeah.
No, you didn't, there's no, oh, yeah, did you get three? Oh, how did that slip by me?
Carl, don't tell them.
Well, anyway, we, we do need an extra mechanic. We have- We do need the extra mechanic because there's only two at the DPW, um, especially with all our vehicles that we take care of and the age of our vehicles.
Right.
So, that extra mechanic will be very helpful, especially, uh, well, one wants to be transferred out and go back to being the HMEO, so I need people to cover. As far as the other ones, the other ones, the EVT mechanic, that's the fire department mechanic, and then you have the police fleet mechanic, those are two down there. Those are the ones that are at the fire department and at the police department.
Okay, so they, do they work exclusively for the, they're under your budget, but they work for the police or the fire?
Correct.
Okay, so they're located with your building?
No.
They're not?
They're located at the fire department and at the police department.
Okay. And, and so, the, the, the top one of eleven oh two, it's, so you asked for three, but you're only funded for two?
He's got three.
Is it right now?
I got three.
He's got three.
Oh, you got three?
He's funded for three.
Oh, so funded for three, okay.
Scribner's error.
Tanya, we gotta change. Well, I, so, there, number of employees, Tanya, it's one of those where it says two, but in the line, it's actually-
Three.
Three people in there, so I guess if it's gonna be three, we gotta change that number to three, unless this council's gonna, um, cut it. I, it wasn't my intention to put the third one, sorry, Carl. Um, but, uh, I, it's in your hands right now, so you do what you want with the budget.
Counselor Bacon.
I'm all set.
So, taking a little different approach, so, say theoretically, the three do stay, would it be reasonable to say that the five-two-four-one-oh could then decrease because you'd have your own people inside repairing them? Is that an outsourced thing, the repair and maintenance of the vehicles?
No.
That went from the one oh two to the seventy?
Yeah, no, those are, those are basically for-
Big parts. Oh, okay. All right, I wasn't sure if-
Yeah, no, those are basically for parts.
Transferable. Okay, thanks.
Counselor Yer.
I, I don't know the answer. Um, I think though we have to relook at this whole, it, it's kind of an experiment that failed, you know, and, and no one in this room outside of maybe Peter and myself even remember. The, uh, the proposal was to consolidate all mechanics into a, into a pool and to put a salary, you know, accordingly to a head mechanic, to a lesser, you know, you know, mechanic, and to, uh, to try to, to make sense out of what at one time was the fire department mechanic had, you know, before we did this, under mayor, uh, was Mike Sullivan, was, salary was creeping up to the deputy chief's salary, which, you know, the mayor didn't, didn't like, but he was trying to be fair. And, and the whole thought was that the pool would, you know, under guidance, you know, work on all vehicles, a mechanic could work on any department, and it, it just never seemed to work out, except maybe kept the salaries down a little bit.
The only thing that I could say is with the fire department vehicles, they're specialized.
Yeah.
You have to have specialized licenses. So, obviously, a DPW mechanic, even though he might have the skills to work on a diesel engine, he might not have the, have the skills to work on a fire truck.
Understood. But, if the fire mechanic stayed in the fire department budget, that salary would be thirty thousand dollars more per year. So, I don't know the answer, but maybe we gotta look at it again and try to figure it out. Because we had, we had one question earlier, and I understand the, about the overtime is, who's, who's watching the overtime for each mechanic? You know, if, if police and fire are not working at the DPW, it's kinda safe to say the DPW's not overseeing it.
Correct.
And the police, the chief of police told us, he wasn't either. So, it's interesting. I'll leave that up to the managers.
We're trying, we're trying to, yeah. Pardon?
I said, I'll leave that up to managers. This is budget talks, not management, right? I'll say.
All right. So, no one online? Next page.
Department of Public Works Refuge Collection, page number thirty-eight.
Counselor McGivern.
I, I, I mean, I've seen the same thing as far as the, uh, heavy molder equipment operators go. So, my only question is, do we have enough manpower, it looks like we do, to pick up?
Yes, we picked up three. So, we, we do have enough manpower in refuse collection, refuse and recycling. The only issue it becomes is when they are on vacation, you know, we have to take from, uh, highways and bridges to backfill, uh, people who are out on leaf.
Counselor, there were, there were eight open positions on top of, and so, I just reduced that by four. Um, to, you know.
You can get the work done, that, that's, that's what counts.
The, the challenge is just, if we were like, if, if these positions were being filled in, right, like, then it would be a no-brainer, we just, but they weren't, and so, there's needs in other places. I'm trying to, you know, soften the, the, the budget here as much as possible. Um, but again, certainly areas we can revisit if and when we start getting better. I think Carl was, you know, we were actually talking about alternative plans and, um, so it, you know, these are things that we just gotta keep our eye on for sure, and, and if we can bring it back, bring the four back, um, when we get to a point where the workforce culture is shifting and people are wanting to come to work for the City Holyoke as a CDL driver, then we can, we can go back to that. Um, so that's, that's what's going on there.
When, uh, as a contractor, these days, when the refuse worker is, uh, completed their, uh, their route, they go home.
Their route, yes.
So, they don't help out highways and bridges, but highways and bridges have to help out them when they're not there.
Correct. But then they get to leave early too, the people on highways and bridges, they worked on the refuse that day.
My hat goes out to all of them. I mean, their work is incredibly hard and I think they're unsung heroes.
Counselor Bacon.
Thanks. Um, can you just remind us, because I know it's been covered, that with the new trucks, there was also the expectation of new containers, and that are those in here?
No, the new trucks that we got, the split pack, uh, the split packer-
Right.
The dual packers, those, that's for recycling, and we're still gonna go with the bins for now, the small blue bins, which, you know, one side's gonna be bottles and cans, the other side's gonna be paper and cardboard. Okay, so that's the plan. The new totes that are coming in are gonna be for garbage only.
Okay.
That was what was funded through ARPA.
Okay, so it's not showing here, but it is coming in the new year?
Yes. We're, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna say it, but I will, hopefully by the end of the summer.
Okay.
We just got, we just got a new recycling coordinator, we're sitting with the contractor, with the state contractor regarding the cans tomorrow, um, with purchasing, to make sure everything's all on board and coming out with a plan of action to get those totes to refuse only to the residents.
Okay. Because I just wanna make sure I have it straight in my head, that is for the trash, and we're keeping the recycling as it is.
Yes, and then eventually, we'll get the totes, hopefully do a capital project for that in the next year.
For the trash.
For recycling.
Oh, for the recycling? Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, one of the things that we found out about a month ago was that our la- our landfill contract, what we paid for a ton for garbage, was gonna go up, I think, for a hundred and one dollars, and we're paying, I'm gonna say about ninety dollars per ton. Working with purchasing and working with, uh, with Jamie, basically, she's the one who spearheaded it, and, you know, we talked, she reached out to a couple of different contractors and negotiated her price of ninety-six dollars a ton. So, she's saving, she say, helped save the city about forty thousand dollars a year over the life of the contract, uh, which is about three years. So, even though in the budget right here, it says seven hundred twenty thou- uh, thousand dollars, that was based on what we thought the increase was gonna be.
Okay.
But, it's gonna be actually seven hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, based on the five-year average of garbage that we've disposed at Casellas. So, that'll probably be reflected in the amendment.
That probably would be supplemental, um, and that happened just let, about a month, less than a month after I already submitted everything, where we had a nice, uh, surprise from the current vendor of this increase, and immediately, we called Jamie and said, "Hey, can you look into this?" And, uh, she worked some magic, so, but there's still an increase.
Anyone further? Next page.
Uh, municipal parking facilities, page number thirty-nine. Um, as you see, the part-time clerk is not in there anymore, that was moved over to DPW administration, and most of these were, you know, uh, energy costs that we decreased, and try to keep it mostly flat as far as repair and maintenance of the parking facilities.
Any questions for this page? Seeing none, next page.
Uh, Department of Parks.
Forty-seven?
Forty-seven, yes. Have we basically kept it flat?
I think we, we did remove one open position.
Yes.
A labor, I believe.
Counselor Bacon.
Did, thank you. Did the grade change with the clerk?
Grade change?
Yeah, for, um-
Yeah, because that-
Five-one-one-oh-four, I think.
That was the cl- the cl- I'm sorry, which one? We're talking about the clerk in?
Um, line five-one-one-zero-four. It looks like the grade changed, or it was only filled for part of the year, maybe.
Were we talking about which?
Um, the head administrative clerk? Maybe it was only filled for part of a year previously.
Page forty-seven.
What page is that?
Page forty-six, line five-one-one-zero-four.
Forty-six.
It might have only been filled for part of a year.
Forty-six.
I just wondered.
We had them last night, right?
Pardon?
That was a Parks and Rec, uh-
Parks and Rec is someone else.
We did that last night, Recreation?
Parks are around forty-seven.
We're at forty-seven.
That's the Parks Maintenance, basically.
Gotcha. Okay. Never mind.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Or we get, we get that confused in our department.
I'm giving you more departments. You don't need any more. You don't need any more.
All right, next page.
Forty, I think, I don't know, except at Hall. It's just a wastewater treatment plan, plant.
Yeah.
That's a different discussion.
Seventy-five, fifty-six.
Yeah.
Great. Next page.
Fifty-five is, uh, water tree and plant administration operations. We kept it according to what the contract is. Uh, I think we had this discussion in the finance committee of what we did to try, increase the expensive of repair maintenance of sewers to a hundred thousand dollars. But we kept everything level according to the contract. And, uh, we'll be, I guess we're discussing about a rate increase.
Any other questions? Well? All right. Well, that takes you to the end of your first budget.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so that takes us to the end of the meetings on all the departments, of which June twenty-sixth will take up the budget itself and propose cuts, 'cause we can't add. Um, the mayor is gonna provide, I think, a supplemental. And finance is taking up stuff tomorrow at the marathon meeting.
Do well, Joe. Big meeting? Yes, I warned, uh, a few people not to show up till later.
So.
But we will do our best.
So with that, I wanna thank
Make one comment though, while we have the mayor here and, or Carl too, but, um, that final special meeting for the, it's still a budget hearing, but it's a special meeting where we, we just, we, we, we used to cut as we went. Where a department head and the mayor would be in front of us, and we would, you know, a proposed cut would be voted on. Now we wait until the end. So, some department heads think that they're not welcome at that meeting. They're welcome. In, in the day of Zoom, if we had a department head on Zoom, if there's a question, you know, we could ask a question instead of trying to, you know, go at each other by memory about, you know, proposed cuts, whether they're practical or, or not. So just my, my thoughts, you know.
I, I, I encourage them to come. I'll be sure to, um, send them an invitation, encouraging them to participate if they aren't doing anything that evening.
Thank you.
All right, well, to everyone, all the department heads, commissioners as well, thank you for
Thank you.
Being a part of this process, uh, something that we added in last few years, just to get it going in to make sure
Yep.
That we heard their suggestions and comments. So this will take us to the June twenty-sixth meeting, so with that, we'll adjourn for tonight, and thank you all for everything.
Good night, everybody. Thanks. Thank you.